All right, it's 7 o'clock. Let's go ahead and we'll call this meeting to order. It's good to see everybody. I know I've been in touch with all of you separately, but it's nice to have everybody together. I don't know if y'all saw the press conference yesterday, but the governor announced that he would do an executive order for shelter in place. We've been waiting all day for those details to come out, and they did about 15 minutes before this meeting. What I've seen at initial glance is that it's not a whole lot different really from anything that we have already in place here. You can still leave your house for essential purposes, going to the doctor, going to the store. All businesses are basically directed to their minimal operating. I can't remember how he worded it, but basically everybody's, the gist is everybody's supposed to stay home. You can go outside and walk or exercise, those types of things. It doesn't say anything specifically about parks, so I don't think we have to change anything that we've done there. Obviously, his order supersedes anything that we've done or the county's done. And it goes from tomorrow through April 13th. So we'll be sorting through that. I've asked Jennifer to put it up on the website, on the COVID-19 section of the website. And then we've got a pretty good summary that I got ahold of that kind of goes down and gives an explanation and answers a lot of questions that people are going to have. Because there's been so much confusion with all of the different executive orders at the local level. This will streamline it and everybody will know exactly where they stand. And yesterday I had extended our executive orders through April 24th to coincide with what the governor had at that time. Had school going through, but now that's been, he closed school for the rest of the year. So what we'll do is just see what the governor does on April 13th when his executive order expires. If he makes it go longer or not. We've been doing everything that we can to keep citizens and to help citizens and businesses as we've gone through this. Jennifer has done an outstanding job of putting together the COVID-19 resources page on the website. And that's got resources for citizens. Penny put together three or four pages of anything from United Way, other organizations that help with food, clothing, rent, mental health, all kinds of things. So Penny, thank you for putting that together. And Jennifer, thank you for getting it up on the website. Which also kind of a clearinghouse for information for businesses on how to navigate the application process for the federal stimulus funds. And I've got a lot of good feedback from the business community. That's been very helpful. And we got a lot of that from the Cobb Chamber of Commerce. I think y'all know, I sent out, I put together a task force to get some input from the community on what the city can be doing to help local businesses. And on that task force, business interests, education interests, elderly care. And I'm missing another section. But we got just a group together to say, look, give us info, what can we be doing? And what came out of that, suspending late fees and cutoffs for water sewer sanitation for 60 days, deferring business license fees, liquor license fees, or any other kind of fees that are due. A lot of those were due earlier in the year, but some were still outstanding. And then as of today, there was some businesses asking if we could temporarily, the temporary sign permit fees, if we could suspend those so that businesses could put on their property a sign saying that they're open. Not in the right of way, but just on their property, letting people know that they're open for business. And so we did that today through community development. In addition, staff, Tom Bowlen and Landon and Penny and others, Mary, and I'm probably forgetting some folks, have been reaching out to the businesses individually, every business in Smyrna, beginning with those that we had directly affected through executive order, like restaurants, and those that we closed, gyms and others, to see how we as a city can help them specifically. And on a case by case basis, evaluate their situation and what we can be doing to help them. And I'll just say generally, our staff has been absolutely amazing to adapt to this situation and continue to provide services to our public without missing a beat. I just couldn't be prouder of the group of people that we have working here at the city. They've done an outstanding job in every aspect. I know that this will be a tough couple of weeks, three weeks probably even going forward. A lot of bad information, a lot of numbers that we're not going to like. But this town, this city has come together so, so well, just in an effort, just a spirit of generosity to help our neighbors. I've never seen anything like it. And I want to mention a couple of programs that we put together and kind of where they are now. And then I'll turn it over to Tammy and open it up to everybody for discussion. The first thing that we did was called the Support Smyrna Effort, it was support Smyrna.org. And it was an idea that came from a constituent who said, look, why don't we, why don't we have a website where people can donate money and then give that money out in grocery store gift cards to people in need? That was the simple, the simple idea. And then if somebody gave $25 or more to the effort, then they get a yard sign that says Support Smyrna and the website on it. So we, Penny basically put that together. I had a friend do the logo. We got it up and running and in, what, three days Penny, we were up over $15,000 raised. To date, we're up over $20,000 raised and over 300 individual donors from the community, which I think is just amazing. Penny has put together an application process for people that live in the city that are in need, that need, that want these grocery store gift cards. There were, I think, 18 applications as of this morning, and I think we have 15 that were donated from Publix. So I called each individual, all of the 15 who are going to be getting assistance through this program. And I can't tell you how much this means to them, that they're getting this help. It really is going to make a difference. And I know it's not a huge amount, it's $100. But that means an awful lot to people who have lost their job, who've had their hours cut back, who can't go to work because they don't have childcare, or because they're sick or quarantined, or whatever situation. So I'm just super pleased that our communities come together like this. And we're going to continue as these yards, I got the yard signs getting delivered tomorrow from the printer. And I got four big signs, the big four by eight signs printed and 100 yard signs. I donated that to the effort. And then the sign company said, when I told them how many individual contributions we were getting, and we would need more signs, they donated 100 more. So we've got 200 that'll go out this weekend. And I think as people see their neighbors have signs, or they see the signs as they're out walking around or driving around, that this thing will spread like wildfire. And I'm hoping it will continue to help these folks that are in need. The second thing we did was a hot meal delivery program in partnership with the Tillman House at Smyrna First United Methodist Church at Atkins Park. Chef Rusty over there, Rusty Hamlin, came to us with Kevin Drawl. And they said, look, we're closed, but we really want to do something to help the community. What can we do? How can we do a food order and cook and have it delivered to those in need? So they worked with the Tillman House. We raised, gosh, I think they're up over $12,000 or $13,000 now. Some local businesses gave money, Adventure Outdoors, Barrow, Metro Ambulance and some others. They're going to be able to provide 150 hot meals delivered every day this month. And that's just amazing. And they're going to work with the Tillman House, who delivered 17,000 meals last summer and knows where the needs are and knows the families that are in need of this. So very, very pleased that Atkins Park stepped up. Very pleased that our business partners who gave money to this effort and all the people that have contributed. And that, those, the first meal deliveries are tomorrow. So that'll be, that'll be an awesome thing. With that, I'll turn it over to the group for any questions. And then we'll go to Tammy, who's got a few items that she wants to go over and that we need to discuss. Anybody have any questions or comments?
A real simple one, Derek, you and I talked, I've got a contribution, but they could not make it over the website. It's a check that I just got a text that is in my mailbox out here. Who do I need to deliver that to?
I got that same question. So you can do it to one of two things. Both, both of these programs are run through nonprofits, 501(c)(3)'s. The Support Smyrna Effort is through the Smyrna Public Safety Foundation, so those checks can be made.
They made it out to Smyrna Public Safety.
Within, in the memo line, it says Support Smyrna Effort. And then if they want to contribute to the Hot Meals Program, it's made out to Tillman House with Atkins Meals as the memo line.
Okay. And then take it to...
You know, Sean Tindall has been coordinating that with Penny. And I would just suggest you get with Penny. Penny and Landon have kind of been corralling all of the, anything that's outside of the typical internet applications and those types of things. So I would just, Penny, I know you're on here. Maybe you can get with Corky offline or figure out how to get that check in.
We'll get a plan together and email everybody out.
Okay.
So one thing that I had mentioned to Tammy, I had a person contact me and we were talking and I asked them if they needed anything, and they did need some groceries, which we picked up and took them to his house. And in my conversation, I asked him if he knew how to work on the, do things on the internet. And he said, of course. And then I said, well, I started talking to him about it. And he said, but Susan, the library is closed. And I realized then, he didn't have access, you know, in his home and he has, he doesn't have a cellphone. So I guess my wonder is, how do we reach people like that that might need, need something, you know, like meals or that might benefit from the grocery store card?
I don't know the answer to that as far as the grocery store card. On the Meals Program, Tillman House has been doing that so long in the community that I think that their reach is far enough that they're going to be able to get to the people that need it. I don't know the answer on the grocery store gift cards. I do know that we have been getting the word out as best we can. I know that all of, I met with all of the apartment communities and owners and managers this week. And they are putting all of that information on their residence doors. So as far as the apartment communities, we got that covered. I don't know the answer to that. Penny, any ideas?
We actually have been, I've helped several people over the phone, basically completing it. So I mean, if anyone wants to call in, we could, anytime someone's requested accommodation so far, I've been able to help them, whether it was finding a way to get them something they could do on their phone or just handling it over the phone with them. But we certainly can figure out a process to help everybody. If they call in, they can call my city number and we can certainly walk someone through the application, help them complete it and get them in the system. We don't want technology to be a challenge that limits somebody from access to groceries if they need it. So again, we've been very accommodating to anyone who's needed help finding things or getting things together or help with other issues as well. So yeah, I would say have them call and we can walk them through it.
Okay, thank you. That sounds good. Thanks.
Anybody else, any questions or comments about what's going on or these programs or anything at all?
Great programs. And they really compliment Derek, you making it happen. Staff for, you know, their excellent work and kicking it off. It's really just, you know, it's a, it's a great vehicle for folks to be able to participate and support, you know, support our city, right? So you give them, you give folks the opportunity and make it easy for them. They definitely will step up and help. And even when it's not easy, they'll step up and help. So I really appreciate you guys making that happen.
And I hope when we get those signs out, you know, people will start to recognize, I mean, 200 yard signs, that's going to be an impact. And people will see it and hopefully see those big signs. And hopefully the contributions will continue rolling in.
I would also say that the amount of people who I've heard from that have already donated, who've expressed an interest in donating again. So I anticipate we'll have people who've done an initial donation. And as long as we keep the program up and running, we'll make another donation in a couple of weeks. Or should we say we're getting low and need funds? I had multiple people express that they were happy to contribute more if we need it.
And just for frame of reference, I mean, right now with a couple more donations coming in, I think we're close to $25,000. We, I mean, 250 families are going to get assistance. And that's, that's just in a few days of this program. That's amazing. That makes, that's making an impact. What else does anybody have?
Real quick, I had somebody reach out that had asked about water bills. I know that we're stopping disconnections and all of that. But if somebody does get behind on their water bill, we don't know how long this is going to go. Has there been any, I think I brought up before, I think Corky brought it up too, about trying to get these people back up to, you know, a current status. You know, if somebody's behind on their water bill by two, three months, and then, you know, they've got this huge bill that they try to get when we turn disconnections back on. I know we don't know how long this is going to go, but are there any kind of preliminary conversations on how we're going to want to try to handle that as we move on down the road? And what kind of, just what can be done to try to alleviate some of the distresses?
We've got a couple of options, you know, that we can, we can do like some of the commercial landlords or the apartment communities are doing and deferring, deferring those and then paid, you know, work paid back over the course of a year or something along those lines. I've asked Kristin to look at what numbers look like if we were to forgive some of that. The Finance Committee is actually, Special Committee on Budgets actually meeting tomorrow to discuss this and several other items. You know, just as we're moving, you know, this is going to be a significant impact financially on the city. What's that going to look like? What are, you know, we're in the middle of the budget process. What do we need to be looking at? So the Finance Committee is going to be looking at a lot of that stuff tomorrow and come back to this body with a recommendation for a lot of these things, just kind of an overview.
Okay.
Good question.
I know we're, we still don't know how long this thing's going to go, so it's always, there's the unknown of that, but yeah. I just had somebody reach out.
The answer is, the answer is we want to help our businesses and our citizens as much as we can. And so we're, you know, we're looking at everything, everything in our, just everything in our arsenal to figure that out.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is Kristin. I was going to say, we, we do that anyways with our customers who get behind. We set up a payment plan with them and they agree to a certain amount to pay within a certain timeframe. And we document all that in their files and make sure that they stay on that payment, payment plan. So we do that now with customers. And so it won't be a problem incorporating that into a bigger program once we get to the end of this.
Kristin, I couldn't help but notice, is your camera broken?
No, my camera's not broken. I have got a brand new puppy that I've been playing in the backyard with, so I'm going to leave it off for everybody's use next time.
All right.
We'll just leave it at that.
Tammy, do you want to go on to your part of the agenda and talk about some of those things on your list?
Yes. So good evening, everyone, and hello to those who I haven't seen in weeks. I do have a couple of things that I'm going to bring up and the staff are going to be also helping me with some of these. The first thing was a proposed policy that we wanted to bring forth to the council for consideration. And basically, it would address hazardous pay for our fire, police and public works employees. And specifically in regards to public works, it would be our sanitation and recycling employees. And, you know, as, you know, our citizens within Smyrna, as we're managing this COVID-19, you know, we have these city employees who are working in the fields, in the offices, every single day. They're not on like an alternative schedule. They're not allowed, or they don't have the ability, I should say, to be able to work remotely. And so I thought that it would be in our city's best interest, you know, if we recognize these employees for the work that they're doing and particularly how grateful I am, and I know how grateful you, each of you probably are for the work that they are doing. So what I wanted to propose, and I've had Kristin and Carol assisting me with this, is that we do $2 per hour for each hour worked. And what that would mean, for example, a fire employee, and Carol, chime in and tell me what that would mean for a fire employee, a police department employee, and an 80-hour employee in public works, what that would mean for them as far as like a monthly take home?
Well, it came out roughly just based on a quick crunching of the numbers. It was a little over, and I don't have that spreadsheet in front of me now, but it was almost $500 a month on average for a fire department employee. And I believe it was about $368. Do you have those numbers in front of you?
I don't have those. No.
Well, I'm going to pull that one on one side.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it was, it was under $500 a month and it depend, would depend on how many hours they actually worked. So 360 something roughly for, for the 80-hour employee and in between there for the 86-hour employees.
The recording, the email you sent a little while ago, Carol, said 346 for eight hours, 372 for 86 and 468 average for fire. The fire's going to be depending on their schedules, because they have different schedules with the average amount. So sometimes it'd be more than that, sometimes it would be less.
Exactly.
Kristin, am I right that the, that the impact monthly would be somewhere around $75,000 or $80,000?
I believe that's what the spreadsheet, yeah, about it, yeah. About $80,000 included in.
Yeah, it was $82,334. And my recommendation would be that we take that out of contingency. We have about $260,000 in contingency, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kristin. But I think that would be a viable funding source to do this. Now, this would apply to about 217 employees. And, you know, we would have to probably determine how long we would want to do this, if this is something you all are interested in. We do have a draft policy that we've put together. And I can send that out to each of you to take a look at it. We did send it to the Council Committee on Policies. And I communicated with the three of those council members that we were making a change, slight change, because we had initially looked at doing annual leave, but realized that may not be sustainable for us to do that. So considering the hazardous pay, which is also something that many of you may have heard that the city of Atlanta did, but they did a flat $500 for their employees.
And you said, if I'm, if I understand correctly, we have a mechanism already in our payroll system that if we do $2 an hour of hazard pay, it's easily done. And that was the numbers that we ended up with was the, however much it was for fire, however much it was. The $82,000 a month is based on that, that $2 and can be done through our payroll system currently, correct?
Yes.
I would, I'd be in favor of that. I think that...
Me too, me too. These people are, these people are, you know, everybody, everybody on staff is working and getting paid. But fire, police and our public works folks, and even the folks who are in the utilities department dealing with the public on, in the, in the windows at City Hall. Everybody that's coming in contact with the public and is out and about is taking on a risk. And I think they should be compensated for that.
This does not include the water department employees or any, any employees that are currently working limited hours. It only includes the police and, which is 911, jail, and the fire. Sanitation and recycling, it does not include any other employees in this number.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Right, why, why wouldn't we include those as well?
Because this is something for y'all to talk about, but those employees are currently working two to three days a week and they're getting paid the full, the full 40 hours a week.
Okay. So they're basically getting, they're basically getting their hazard pay.
Yes, they are.
Yeah, that makes sense.
If they come back on...
I'm sorry?
You know, if they, if these employees, because of demand from citizens and everything else, if these employees come back and are working every day like they used to, then I would say, yes, I think they would be, they'd do that. But currently, they're not working a full schedule or do not work a full schedule.
Okay.
Susan, did you have a question? Yes, thanks. I thought about another group of people that work out in the public as well, and that's the Marshals Department. I know that I've received some emails about some things. And so I would imagine if they're working, they're out and, you know, going out to those neighborhoods. But maybe Tammy, you could speak to us more about that, but...
Kristin, is that, is that, Kristin, is that another situation where they're not working full time? They're not, they're getting paid for all the hours, they're not working all the hours? Or is that a situation where they do need to be recognized for hazard pay?
Well, we could check with Rusty, but my understanding was they're, they're doing the same thing. They've got limited working hours as well.
Right.
Doing, they're doing things remotely and through video and everything else. We can check with Rusty to make sure. I don't want to, you know, speak for Rusty, but I thought that's where we, I thought that was on one of the updates, like one of the staff updates that Heather put together for us.
Yeah, but I think the last update did have them coming in Monday through Friday, but they were working like seven to four or eight to five. But yeah, we probably do need to check with Rusty in regards to his staff. I know we're, to me, that's a really important thing during this time period, you know, to make sure that in terms of those, like the garbage waste, make sure it's getting cleaned up. Or furniture that gets put out on the side of the road and the grass. They always have trouble at this, starting this time of year with the grass. But I don't know how this executive order is going to affect the cutting of people's lawns and things like that.
I don't think it will.
You don't think it'll affect that at all? Okay. So we'll still expect people to have their grass cut then? So that'll be, yeah, something that is important through the Marshals Department.
Well, I think I'm... Go ahead, Tim.
So, sorry. Just on the, we took, make sure I got this right. We have 217 employees and right now $82,000. And is that for total cost? Is that for, that's to date so far, the $82,000?
That's for one month.
That's for one month.
Month of, month of March, or that's what we expected to be?
Yeah, I mean, that's what, that, that was just a monthly number. So I mean, if y'all retro to back, you know, you, that would, you would pay that and then you'd start paying it going forward, or you could start paying it effective the new pay period that begins on Monday. But that's an estimate of the monthly amount.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I mean, I think we as a group can decide when we want to make that, you know, if we want to make that retroactive to a certain date. These, these folks have been out there doing this for the last couple of weeks and it's been right in the middle of this crisis, so. And then Kristin, Kristin, tell me, tell me, I know that there's stimulus money. And I know we haven't navigated all of this, or Carol, maybe you can, maybe you can answer. I know that there's 75% reimbursement to municipalities for, for expenses related to COVID-19. Would this fall under that or no?
No. I don't, I don't think it does.
Okay. Just something to consider, but I, yeah, I'm with, I'm with you.
It might be something, might be something that I know if we track expenses towards FEMA, I'm not sure if that, if, you know, we have any possibility, but not under like the sick pay. It's like, you don't get a lot of help when you're actually paying your people. So, but we'll talk about the, the act and what that provides a little later in the agenda.
I do know that we're waiting on clarification. We've asked that, that exact question to FEMA about the eligibility of hazard pay. And we're waiting on that answer now.
So am I hearing? So am I hearing, is anybody, is everybody in favor of going forward and recognizing these folks for, for the, for the conditions that they're working in?
I'd like to see us go back to when we started the furlough, not furloughs, but people staying at home.
That was, that was, the Declaration of Emergency, I think, was on the 20th of March.
I don't know if I can see us go back to that date and begin that retroactive.
I'd agree.
So how long do we want to do this?
Are we? I mean, I think it's kind of, Louis, I think, I think it's kind of one of those, you know, we've been trying to treat this situation in this evolving environment and quickly changing environment incrementally. We've been making decisions as we go. Like Austin said earlier, we don't know how long this is going to last. So if we make this retroactive to March 20th, you know, maybe we go through, maybe we go through the 24th of March or the end of April as a, as a start, and then reevaluate it at that time. I, I think, I think for something like this, it's probably best done incrementally as we go. Because this is an uncertain, no script for this, you know?
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Rusty, I sent Rusty a text, and he says he's on the call. And he said that he's got certain enforcement that are in the field. So he said that the building inspectors should be added to the hazard pay. So we're going to increase our number a little bit.
Okay.
And I would just, I wouldn't be the finance director if I didn't say this, but there is some contingency there. That contingency is there for other things, too. It might be that we're, you know, did it, some other areas. I just want to put that out there, and I want to take care of the employees. I understand, I want to let y'all know that we, we're really not getting revenue right now. And so it might be that we're going to see some of these, using a lot of our reserves.
Kristen, we're having trouble hearing you. Can I ask everybody that's not speaking to mute their phones? And then Kristen, could you maybe repeat some of what you said?
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. What I was saying is, is that Rusty sent me a text back and said the code, that, the, the, hold on, let me make sure I said this right, that the building inspectors should be added to the hazard pay. So that's going to increase that number a little bit, just, you know, just so y'all know. Um, and then I also had said that I just wanted to put it out there that this is going, if we, you know, go back to the declaration and going forward, we're going to eat up that contingency that we have very quickly. And so I just, you know, would not be a finance director if I didn't say that at the end of the year, you might see a big use of our reserves, because right now we don't really have a lot of revenue coming in. And I just wanted to put that out there. I, I feel like we should support our employees 100%. I just wanted y'all to realize that that contingency is going to go pretty quickly, you know, by doing, by making this move, just in full disclosure.
And I'll just, I'll say from my perspective, you know, I, I think that the reason that we have reserves is, is for unforeseen circumstances exactly like this. So I'm in favor of moving forward and making our, these people who are taking on this extra risk to serve our citizens, I'm, I'm in favor of going forward with this.
What did, um.
Because you'll see, you'll see it on your financials, and you'll, and you'll see it, you know, hopefully the, the, the Department of Arms and stuff. I mean, obviously, I understand what's going on, but I just was going to put it out there so there weren't any surprises, you know, when we come to the end of the year. I didn't want anybody to be surprised, so makes sense. I just wanted to put it out there.
So Kristen, I heard you say the building inspectors. Did, what did Rusty say about the marshals?
He said that the marshals are, they're working full time, but they're, they're not having public interaction. So he said the building inspectors are in the field full time doing inspections. So they are, he thought that the building inspector should be getting it because they are interacting with the public much.
Did you tell?
Sanitation.
Did you tell him we were, the question came up about the code enforcement officers? Because I would want to get his input on that, too.
He says he's on the call, but I don't know.
Rusty, can you hear us?
He, he might be calling in and muted.
Okay. You know, from my, my perspective, I, I think that a lot of what they do is, is, you know, out in the, out in the field, and the marshals, you know, have to leave warnings on people's doors or talk to people about issues. You know, I mean, some of it.
Do we think that we ought to leave it to the department head to, I mean, he knows exactly what they're doing, and if they're, if they're really assuming any extra risk, I would defer to Rusty's job.
Okay.
I'm trying to find out right now what caller ID Rusty is, so I can pull him in.
Okay. Hey, Derek, one thing, the, March the 20th was a Friday. Do you, would you all be open to us starting on March the 23rd, which is the beginning of the pay period?
I'd be okay with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, makes sense.
Okay. All right, is, can we move on to the next item? And we will also send out the, the draft policy. And Scott, we need to let you review the draft policy, too.
Hey, if I, if I could real quick, I just got to echo Kristen's comments. I think, I think we'll learn more tomorrow during the finance, you know, review. But there's every reason to think that our revenues are going to be significantly impacted in the months to come, and that'll have obviously cascading effects on, you know, on what we can do. So fully on board with what we just discussed, but I think everybody knows and appreciates that it's going to be, you will have changes or, we'll have to have changes to our expense side also in the coming weeks, so. Which I think staff already knows that, right? So I'm just saying, stating the obvious, but I'm, I'm on board with, with Kristen's comments.
Thank you, Tim. Um, the next thing I wanted to mention, the Family First Coronavirus Response Act. You may have seen some emails from Carol about this. She's going to give you a brief update, an overview of what this means for our city. This act went into effect on April the first. So Carol, can you chime in?
Um, yes, as you can imagine, because it went in effect April 1st, and it was just enacted shortly before that, we're still trying to figure it out. Fortunately, a lot of the HR people throughout the state, working in local government, we've been working very collaboratively on that. The first thing we did was get out the notice. So it should, it went out to everyone via email. I also asked all the departments to, to post it for those who have workers actively in their facilities. So what this does is a couple of things. It provides paid sick leave for those who are experiencing symptoms that have, or exposure that has caused them to either be in an isolated or quarantine situation. It also, if they are experiencing symptoms and they've been, and they've been tested and are waiting for a medical diagnosis. It also provides extended FMLA benefits for those folks who are taking care of, of a family member or someone in their household that is experiencing all those same things, as well as those who maybe stay in home to care for a child because childcare or schools are closed, is not available. So it breaks it down, and it provides paid sick leave anywhere from two full weeks at 100% to two-thirds, depending on the category in which the employees fall. So that's the exercise that we're going through now, is trying to identify, has anyone been affected and qualify under these? With, they do have to request it, so the next thing is pushing out a request form along with some more information to employees about how they express interest in taking advantage of any of this. We've set up codes in the, in the payroll system, in the timekeeping system, to help us categorize these folks. And so hopefully, early next week, we'll have all that straightened out and, and go from there. As this develops, too, another thing that I was reading about earlier today, it's not about the act, but we could get in a situation of having to provide letters as well for essential employees that they can carry with them, if that comes down to it. So as it develops, we'll just keep everybody posted. But we're ready to, to implement these provisions under the act. And unfortunately for local governments, the word is that we're offering this pay. It's mandated by the federal government, but we as a local government, as of now, aren't eligible to get any of the tax credits that, that other businesses are able to essentially take for themselves. They say contemplate taking it right off the top when you file your non-41 quarterly taxes. But unless something changes, then we wouldn't qualify for that. But it's, we're still going to keep track of it just in case that turns, or FEMA allows us some grace, or, you know, we're, we'll be on top of our data, no matter what we need to report and who we need to report it to. Any questions?
Carol, do we, do we need to change any of our policies?
I did not hear back from Sharon Morgan today. I do think we need to at least amend our FMLA policy to allow, because it's a pretty significant difference than FMLA is operated in the past. It was never paid leave, and now it contemplates a partial payment of FMLA leave. And it also extends it to a set of employees that's never been eligible under FMLA before, because an employee only has to be employed for 30 days to be eligible for these benefits. So at the very least, we'll be looking at doing an addendum or a revision to the FMLA policy coming up probably early next week.
And when we do that, let's make sure that we circle back with our Council Committee on Policies, so that they can be in the loop, provide some input as well. Scott, did Tracy and Sharon from L B Thompson reach out to you yet?
Uh, we hadn't, we hadn't talked yet, but yeah, we were trying to get in touch with each other.
Okay, all right. All right. Any other questions for Carol on the act? Um, next thing, Kristen, I wanted you to give an update on the fiscal 2020, 2021 budget meetings that we've had so far.
Yes, ma'am. We started those meetings end of last week and have continued on through this week. Um, we have some more tomorrow, and then I think we have some Monday, and we finish up on Tuesday. Just sort of big picture, currently, the way we, where we're at right now, we have a $1.6 million deficit of expenses requests over the projected revenues. That does not include a, an increase for our group health insurance, because we have a meeting with our broker in a couple of weeks to get a better, to get a better idea on that. So, um, and then the Cobb Tax Information, we just got the information from Cobb County for the, the assessor's office earlier this week. And so we're, they're saying an overall increase countywide of 5%. In Smyrna, we typically have a few points higher than that. Our current projection that is in the budget is a 7% increase on values of homes. We are going to kind of continue to look at that and kind of tweak that number. But like I said, we've got, you know, a couple of meetings left to go. We're at $1.6 million deficit, so we've got a lot of ground to make up. I talked to the departments about that this morning, and just want to kind of put that out there for all of y'all to know that, you know, probably got some decisions we're going to have to make in the near future. That's going to be one of the topics of conversation for the Budget Committee tomorrow afternoon. That's sort of a big picture. Does anybody have any questions?
Kristen, I did want to add with the Girma renewal. Um, Carol, can you chime in regarding our property liability insurance? And, because we had a meeting with GMA about that recently, and that may.
We did. Yeah, and those lines, it, it, it will, but it's not, it's not a significant increase. We did have a meeting, because those lines of coverage renew on May 1st. So we'll be seeking permission to bind that coverage and execute all those documents. What we are seeing is a 3.3% increase. It's an increase from $607,000 to $627,311. And it's predominantly due to the fact that we had, every three years, they do an appraisal of all of our properties. And we had a 9.8% increase in, in the coverage on our properties resulting from the appraisals. So I think a 3.3% increase is pretty reasonable, considering a pretty steep increase in the amount of coverage that, that we're, you know, covering things for, essentially. Um, we also had some good news. We do operate on a five-year lookback period. Our claims continue to get a lot better. And next year's renewal, our 2014 will roll off, and that was our, our worst year. So we should, assuming that everything continues to trend for the better, have an even better renewal next year. Any questions?
All right, thank you. And the last thing I wanted to bring up, the council, you all approved the new chaplaincy program. And I had made the recommendation that we not implement that program until July the 1st. But now, of course, that was done prior to the COVID-19 pandemic. So I was going to ask the council if it was okay for us to start that program sooner than later in case employees need some type of spiritual counseling. Just for example, myself, I just found out this morning that I had a family member that passed away of, of the coronavirus. So I thought maybe it may be a good idea in case our employees need some counseling. And of course, they still have access to the EAP program, but I just wanted to know if it was okay for us to begin that program sooner than later.
Yes.
Absolutely, without a doubt.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, Mayor, that's all I have. I was going to ask if it was okay, we can have Roy give the COVID-19 update?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Hope everybody's doing well. Tonight's, tonight's evening update, we're going to see probably about, I think, the latest, the latest number for statewide positive cases is 5,444. I'll tell you what's interesting and a little bit scary is, right now for Georgia, we're tracking about 18% to 20% of those people are requiring hospitalization. So it's, it's a pretty, pretty significant number of those people that get infected ended up needing to be hospitalized. I know everybody's seen a lot, and you've heard a lot about the shortage for necessary protective equipment for healthcare workers and public safety frontline workers. You know, we're, we've got a great partnership with the Department of Public Health in Waujima. We're replenishing our needs through the Strategic National Stockpile. All of our frontline staff have everything that they need to keep themselves safe and to be able to do their jobs without risk of exposure, or at least to the best, the best of their ability. The point is, we've got the mask, we've got the gloves, the gowns, the goggles, everything that we need so far, so we're very thankful for that. I mentioned that we're in, you know, daily contact with Department of Public Health in Waujima. One of the things that they really help us with is to, the, the effort in trying to, trying to forecast what's going to happen based off of what has happened and all the data that we have. And all the models right now are showing an increase in numbers in Georgia and across the US and predicting that we'll see a peak in about three weeks. Now, that's with the assumption that everybody does what they're supposed to do. In other words, that, that people take the social, social distancing mitigation efforts seriously, and they actually do that. You know, when you, when you couple, you know, the fact that the state's now in a, in this shelter-in-place order, businesses are closed down. In Georgia, 18% to 20% of people that get infected COVID require hospitalization. Obviously, the sooner that we can get this thing behind us, the better. I say that to say this, I think one of the most effective. I say that to say this, I think one of the most effective and important things that all of us can do is to help to continue to communicate to everybody that we can, the absolute necessity and importance of what's happening right now with regard to all the information out there about the necessity for social distancing, the six feet apart, the not going to places unless we just absolutely have to and those types of things. It's critical. You know, we're gonna get past this. I'd rather get past this in three to five weeks versus three to five months, and I know that, that everyone else here would as well, but that's all that I have.
Thank you, Roy. Do we have, Joe, are you on the call? You want to talk a little bit about how enforcement's been going? And then I know you've had some developments in your department, uh, involving some staff.
Correct. Good evening, the mayor and council. Hi, everyone. Hope all is well. Actually, our call volume was down last week, uh, over two hundred calls week over week. So, um, call volume is certainly down, but, uh, we haven't seen a drastic increase in, uh, our domestic responses. More specifically, our assaults and, uh, answering those calls for assaults have occurred and likewise making arrests on those. Auto accidents are down, uh, thefts are down, enter and autos are remaining about the same, but, um, I think that the big picture is our call volume is down, which, um, is, is certainly helping us to keep our folks away from the, from the general public. And speaking of our folks, uh, right now, we have, um, one that has tested positive for COVID nineteen. We have, uh, one showing symptoms that has tested negative. We have three that have been tested and their, uh, results are pending. And right now, we have thirteen self-quarantined, five with symptoms. Included with those, one from our E nine one one center and one from our jail. The good news is the, uh, employee that tested positive, I learned, uh, just before this meeting that he is on his way home from the hospital. Uh, he had spent, uh, better part of last week in the hospital having a pretty rough time, but, um, he has been released and he is on his way home. And, uh, that was the only hospitalized employee we've had. So we're hoping for, uh, good results on the other tests and hoping that we can keep anyone else from becoming ill.
Thank you, chief. I'll, I'll just tell everybody, you know, Chief Bennett and his team and, and Roy and, you know, we, we speak almost every day and they've done a really good job, uh, Roy corralling all this information, Joe, making sure that people are adhering to the directives that we put out there. I think, I think you'd agree with me, chief, generally, uh, as the days go, go forward, with, people are adhering to the social distancing, the businesses are, are, um, uh, closing down that needed to close down. I think generally, we've, we've had a, a pretty good response. And I, I think as this goes on and more numbers come out, uh, and people start to know somebody that, that has this virus, or God forbid, somebody who's passed away from this virus, people will stay home and, and adhere even more than they already are. So thank you guys for your tremendous work, um, in this environment. Really appreciate y'all.
Sure.
Tammy, do you have anything else that you want to go around the horn? You're on mute. Tammy, you're still on mute.
I'm sorry.
There you go.
Is Jennifer Bennett on?
I am.
Okay, you were gonna give the event date discussion?
Right, so, um, the Jungle Festival and the annual Jungle Jog, which is five K, it generally take place that last weekend in April, which as you know now is probably about the time we're gonna peak. Um, I've been in conversations with, um, J R N management about the festival and also our race director. We do have one weekend in June where they could both do it. Um, it's about eleven weeks out, that would be June twentieth and the twenty-first with the five K being on the twentieth. I asked J R N today, would they be, would they be able to give a later date if we wanted that or needed that? And they said, yeah, they could, they just really want to get it in. Um, and obviously, there are a lot of people whose jobs depend upon these festivals, not just J R N, but the crafters and, um, and other performers. So, um, we needed to discuss the viability of that eleven weeks out, but at the same time, I also want to bring up Food Truck Tuesday. That generally starts in May, obviously it can't this year. I wouldn't recommend that, but I would also recommend that if we start it up, we do it even, even later, and I'm recommending coming in after Fourth of July, just because if things come back around and restaurants start coming back, I don't want to introduce food trucks into a community where restaurants have been shutting down. But I just wanted to get some feedback from everyone on how they feel about setting these dates as contingency dates or as, um, full go. J R N knows that we might have to pull it up and, and move if, if thing, if people don't do what they're supposed to do, um, and we crush the virus.
Jennifer, I think that just like anything, there, this, this is included and there's no script for this, there's no, there's no timetable. I mean, there's some projections out there, but, but we don't, like Austin was saying, we don't know how long it's gonna go. I think it's okay to put tentative reschedule dates on with the, you know, knowing that they could and may, and likely maybe, uh, reschedule again, um, just depending on where we are in this, in this process. So, um, yeah, I'm open to any other comments.
So are, are you anticipating that we'll, we will be canceling that event at the end of April, the Jungle Jog and Jungle Festival?
It's already canceled. We canceled everything through the end of April.
Okay, so, okay, you're just discussing the funding date, Roy.
If, if there's no ramifications to cancel it again, you know, at the end of June, might as well move forward and get it on the calendar and give some folks an incentive to, to maintain the social distancing and do everything we can to get back to normal.
Yeah, I'm gonna echo something that the mayor said. I think as people start seeing the numbers and they realize just how serious it is, that they'll understand more if we have to move things like this again.
That's just the, it's just the reality right now. They're gonna have to understand. It just is what it is.
And see, we've got, um, we have one concert already scheduled for June. If we have to push things out even more, that one's gonna get swept out with it too. Um, that one would be a full-on cancel. I don't think we'd reschedule that one. Um, unless the band was completely open to it, but, um, there's only so much we can do, right?
I would just say, as far as these dates go, you know, reschedule them as tentative as best you can and it's kind of as far out as you can, and then we'll just reevaluate as we go.
Okay, thanks.
Y'all want to go around? Austin, uh, the floor is yours.
Um, no, I mean, I don't really have anything. Um, you know, everything's kind of pushed aside for now, given the current state of affairs. I did have a question though, um, as far as the, the council meeting for Monday. I know you had said that the intention is that that's, that's canceled. Um, that, that isn't anything that council needs to take action on. That's just part of, um, what can we do under the emergency order? Is that right?
Scott can comment, but the, when Tammy and I discussed the, the need for a meeting on Monday, um, there wasn't any agenda items. We don't have any, you know, we can't do any public hearings. Staff didn't have anything to be brought forward, so it would, you know, no reason to meet just to meet.
Making sure we don't have to, you know.
Yeah, it'd probably be a good idea at this meeting, so it's in the minutes, to say that we have agreed to cancel the, uh, regularly scheduled meeting on Monday. You know, we're gonna have trouble if going forward, um, with meetings, we're gonna, I mean, the, the, we're, we're gonna have potential issues is if we have some, uh, public hearing required. So, uh, and I think Rusty's managing that pretty well. He's not, he's not gonna process anything to get it before you guys, anything that needs a public hearing, but theoretically, you know, as we move forward, if things come on the, come on the agenda, we can have meetings, but I don't think we can have a public hearing like this.
Scott, do, do we need to have a meeting to, to, say, ratify or vote on this, uh, two dollar increase issue?
No, this is a public meeting. This meeting here is advertised as a public meeting and it's, this is a legal public meeting, so it, it's on the agenda and approved here.
So I actually thought we were gonna be, uh, the way I understood it is that we were gonna be looking at the policy and that, is that correct, Tammy? Or that, that you were gonna be sending us the policy to look at and, um-
Yes. And because the council committee on policies, you all have seen it, but you didn't see the change where we put the two dollars? So yeah, I would ra- rather all of you all take a look at it first and then, um, if you want to ratify it then. But if Scott is getting you to do it now, then I'm okay with it.
I mean, I think it makes sense for us to see the language before we vote on something that doesn't have any language there. I mean, I personally, I mean, I, I think we all agree in principle, but it's one thing to agree on in a principle and then vote for something that we don't have actual language for.
Same here.
I would agree. How hard, this meeting format seems to work pretty well. How hard is, would it be to put together a meeting, I mean, I'm, I'm not saying we gotta do it, but, um-
The only thing I'd, I'd-
Policy, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Yeah. The only thing I'd add to that too is I, um, if there's nothing that we have for Monday, I'm, you know, in agreement that it's, uh, that we're all right to, to cancel it and I'd be fine canceling it. Well, I gotta say, going forward is that I know Mondays are the time when people are paying attention more than Cal meetings. I mean, obviously there's public comment, but there's a lot more people that come to Monday meetings than come to Cal meetings. So as far as going forward and getting information out there, it may be better to try to do things on, you know, the normal times as much as possible, at least my sense, to try to, you know, keep some normalcy and have some time where everyone knows that this is kind of the time that they can get information from, from the city.
Tammy, have we put word out that the Monday meeting is canceled?
Yes, we have. Is that correct, Heather?
Yes, we have. We've posted it everywhere, including, um, on all the public outlets.
Did they-
So Scott, so Scott, for the purpose of this policy and the, the hazard pay, um, is it appropriate, once everybody has a, takes a look, now that we agree, um, in principle on what we're gonna do, I, I think everybody's in agreement, like Austin said, is it appropriate for that to be emailed out and a, and a response from each person to be emailed back in favor of, or does it need to be done at another meeting like this?
Yeah, you'd have to, I mean, you can send it out for informational purposes, but it need to be, it would need to be voted on at some point in a official meeting.
Okay, then it's, then it's- Yeah, yeah, maybe we do a special meeting next week, since we can't, since we've already put word out that Monday is canceled, maybe we just choose another day, uh, of the week and, and go ahead and have a special call meeting for the purpose of this policy and whatever else we need to do. Does that sound good, Tammy? Scott?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think when we, when we originally canceled Monday, we didn't have, this wasn't on our agenda, it wasn't on our radar yet, so.
Right. Um, you can still ha, I mean, you could do the special call meeting on Monday if you wanted to, it just wouldn't be a regular council meeting.
I feel like that's a, I feel like that's a, a mixed message though to the public. We're canceling a meeting and then we're having a meeting, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, especially with the financial issue on it, yeah, you potentially, uh-
Rather do it on another day.
Yeah.
So I know, um, there are, even, even if there's not very much on our agenda, um, I think some, I agree with Austin, there are some people that enjoy watching the meetings for updates and even hearing what you had to say tonight, Derek, I think, you know, the public being able to hear that in a, in a public, in a, in a council meeting is important. And the other thing is the, um, well, I know that they televised our meetings and I have, uh, constituents that still watch it on television and, and they actually really do like it. And I just think that hearing you talk and, and that message that you gave earlier tonight is very important, um, to those, uh, citizens, so anyway.
What do y'all think? Maybe doing it on, uh, maybe doing it on Tuesday or Wednesday, does that, is that anybody, one, is either of those better than another for anybody?
Funny, my evening calendars are pretty much wide open.
I was gonna say, I never get anything on, right?
Yeah, Tuesday will work for me. I mean, that's, that's a really good day for me, uh, so.
Tuesday?
Yeah.
All right, Heather, let's think about doing a reg, a, a special call meeting then on, uh, on Tuesday at seven o'clock. Does that work?
That works.
So we probably already missed that opportunity though for the, um, for it to be televised, or I don't even know if they could do that now, you know, in the, for the Cobb County, uh, station that, that televise our meetings on.
That's run, yeah, that's run through our system that's up there in the council chambers. So we wouldn't have that availability on here.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I don't know what I was thinking. I was thinking we would be there at the council chambers. Sorry.
Hey, can I also ask you guys one thing? So for a special call council meeting, our, uh, ordinance has a strange provision where that you've got to have a certain type of service. Will all of you council members agree to waive whatever particular service is necessary and just agree to have a council meeting Tuesday?
Yes.
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 What do you mean by that? I'm sorry about the special-
Well, I don't have the charter in front of me or the code, but it used to say, and we may have amended this, but it used to say that you had to have personal service, which would mean that by the clerk, it would mean that Heather would have to drive over to your house between now and Tuesday and hand it to you. And we've had council members in the past that have insisted on that for whatever reason. So if you guys have a way, that'd make it a lot easier on staff, you know, in these times.
Can you come down from boss? That'd be fun.
In this environment, I would recommend that we, that we, uh, waive that requirement, y'all?
Yeah. Just needed.
All right, Austin, anything else?
No, nothing else from me.
Land?
Uh, no, I don't have anything.
Travis?
Uh, thank you. Just, uh, good to see everybody virtually this evening. Echo what's been said, uh, by several that, uh, kudos to the two chiefs and our tremendous staff, uh, who's been very loyal and to our mayor for his steadfast leadership. Everybody be safe. Thanks.
Susan?
I'll just, um, reiterate what everybody else said. I want to thank the chiefs for everything that they're doing and also, uh, Frank Martin for his, uh, department. It's been, that's a really important service during this time and, um, and, uh, just hope everybody stays, 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 stay, sorry.
Tim?
Yeah, likewise, thanks, thanks to the staff, um, for all the, you know, hard work and, and Derek and for your leadership here. Uh, you know, I was at Publix today and, and, uh, noticed the shelves are starting to get filled back up again with food and standing next to the fellow stocking the shelves and, you know, just like our sanitation workers and our first responders, I mean, the folks around that town, they help us live our lives, like the folks at the grocery stores, you know, they're on the front lines also, right? And, um, they just deserve a world of thanks. I mean, they make our lives livable, so greatly appreciative of, of everything, you know, everything our staff is doing too, so, but, uh, that's it. Thanks.
Corky?
I'm just glad to see everybody on here safe and healthy. Uh, I'll stay that way.
Louis?
Yeah, kind of the same thing. Um, you know, one of the cool things I've, as I've heard back from a lot of residents, they're really happy that we're being pretty open, transparent and honest with people and also pretty blunt, which is helpful. Um, I think that people really get that message clearly when it's, uh, a clear message and it's, uh, single, coming from a single voice, so that's really good. The only thing that I'll mention, um, only because it has budget implications, I've talked a little bit to Tammy a little bit, uh, this week, um, just circling back on, uh, that, that, uh, silent zone railroad crossing issue. And the only reason why I mention it is because of a budget, is huge budget implications, um, for us because of the cost overrun at the county level. Uh, who knows when we'll actually get to that, um, but I know it needs to be probably something on the radar for, for budgeting purposes, um, down the line.
All right. Tammy, anything else?
Nothing else, thank you.
Staff? Landon, you look like you're about to burst. You got something?
Good, just watching you guys do your thing.
Richard?
Yeah, I would like to just make sure that everybody knows that all the measures that we've taken in the parks to this point and even up through this evening, to this point, all the playgrounds and pavilions have been taped off with police caution tape. All the facilities have been locked. Today, we spent time locking batting cages and shutting off water fountains and removing lids from the doggy outpost stations to prevent people from having to touch those lids to be able to use those outpost stations. So it's, and then tomorrow and Saturday, we'll be putting three-by-six banners in all of the parks at all the entry points that read, "Help us keep our parks open by maintaining a safe distance" or by maintaining, you know, the public safety zone of six feet. So those will be going out this weekend also. There are still a tremendous amount of people that are flooding these parks. The weather has been phenomenal, and it's a constant battle between wanting people to be able to enjoy them and wanting to make sure they're doing it safely. So a lot of the things we're doing have been reactionary, but I wanted you guys to be aware so that if you get calls tonight, tomorrow, the batting cages being locked, all of the drinking fountains have been shut off, and the lids off of the doggy outpost stations have been removed, and that was all done today.
Richard, thank you and your team for all you're doing. Really appreciate it. I resisted closing parks because I just, I think, I think about Bronner and I think about Junkle Park, and I think of others, where there's that wide open space, and if people will just social distance, they gotta be, I mean, everybody's cooped up. I want to be able to go out and enjoy that as long as they're social distancing. So thanks, thanks for all of the efforts, Richard. Appreciate that very much.
No problem. It is, it has been incredible to see the flood of people that have been using the parks and have just really resisted staying inside during this time. So, I mean, you know, I think that for the emotional health of everybody, that's certainly an important thing and a valuable thing for us to be able to provide to the citizens as long as we can. I know a lot of other communities have closed off parking lots and closed parks altogether. Cobb County's done that, the National Park Service has done that, cities all around us have done that. So I think our ability to try to leave Mokum to some degree is, is still a huge benefit to the, to the people of Smyrna.
And I think if my understanding of the executive order from the governor is correct, I, I don't think that those will remain closed in Cobb, but I may be wrong. But, but ours is certainly gonna remain open. Heather?
I'm good, sir. We'll take care of the meeting for next Tuesday.
Mary? No? Tina? Nope. All right, y'all. Thank you very much. We're adjourned.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
See you.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks a lot.